Well, is it warm enough for you yet?
Oh, man. Yeah. I prefer the heat over the cold, but... Man. Pretty early for a hundred degrees, you know? And we got close. On Saturday or whatever.
Yep, nice and warm. Up till last week, heck, with the brother of mine, attic fan.
Yeah.
You ever had a house with an attic fan?
No, my mom has one. Yep.
When we had our house built, we had it wired in the hallway for an attic fan, and I put one in. We used the heck out of it.
Yeah. The whole concept just works really well.
Yeah.
It's exactly how you want to do it.
Yep.
Yeah.
But, you know, the thing about this with an attic fan, you have to learn how to use one. You can't run it during the day or before. At nine o'clock in the morning, you shut it off.
Pulling all the...
Shut it off, close the windows, pull the blind.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. It's nicer here. It feels so nice. How's it going?
It's good inside.
Yeah, it's a little warm.
Yeah, it's been a busy, busy time for us.
Good. I know I've been to see you about a dozen times over the last month, I think. Kevin's a little... Yeah.
It's just been crazy. Ace hasn't seen anything like this in fifty years. You might see it regionally, like you have a major earthquake.
Oh, sure.
A hurricane or something along, but it's more regionalized.
Yeah.
It's been globally.
Yeah, everybody's taking care of projects they haven't, they've been avoiding for ten years.
Forever, so if you have to be at home, let's make home, home relaxed. And it just keeps rolling. They move from one season to the next, and that's good.
But that's okay, right?
It doesn't hurt our feelings at all. Our biggest challenge now is just getting product, keeping it stung. It's gotten to the point now in the supply chain system globally, the raw materials that are used to make raw materials to make more raw materials are not available. It's all the way back to earth, dirt, and you know, just basics. Can't get it out fast enough. It's nuts.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, construction in general is going to run into that problem where there's just not enough material, something.
Yep, and I hope it doesn't...
Yeah, I have metal studs in camp.
Any kind of lumber and that type of stuff, I hope it doesn't get too crazy intensive.
I know. We don't really know yet.
Yeah. I hope that instead of exporting, that we're able to just keep it domestic and draw on those resources.
Yeah, you're exactly right.
I hope.
I hope so. That'd be nice.
There's going to be a full circle to this because if that happens and they're able to keep lumber domestic instead of sending it overseas to be processed and then bring it back here to sell.
Right.
If that cost goes up, it won't be, it won't be cost effective to send it offshore to have it processed.
Oh, no.
Domestic, so then that's more jobs. It's a whole circle.
Absolutely.
And Ace is already going down that road to try to get ahead of that curve and say, "Well, if we do it domestically, it is going to cost us a bit more," but they're looking at, within a year or two, the international solution is going to cost even more. So let's just bite it off now and deal with it.
Yes, let it balance out.
I'll bingo here.
Did you guys homework? Did you know this is it? Yes.
Do you really know all this stuff? Do I have to make it up again?
Yep, I want you to make it up again. If you could just draft real quick, some real quick on those forms, and then I'll put them into a template.
Narrative.
Narrative means, why did you want to be a... Why didn't you want to be a planning commission?
For you. What's changed since I started?
Provision, yeah. Pro revise.
How's it going?
Good, how are you? You doing well?
I'm good. What did you do? What's your good work today?
I just need to say why you want to be on the plan.
Hmm, no.
Something you hobbies on.
Oh, did it?
And then it's all too compiled, and I'm presenting it to the city council. Originally, I was just going to have his pictures up there. Heard the meeting.
I already had it. I don't care, y'all, I put more.
Oh, I did too. I had it in the January, first of February. Is that homework?
I don't know who this is.
Should we stop that guy? Lacking up the airport. Yeah, it's something that you guys just...
In front of you?
Yep, okay. Pour now. Just do it now before we start.
Twelve, ten years ago.
That's good. It was...
Yeah. This stuff is the same, you know?
Did you have a friend that put those... Said to be continued?
Yeah.
Ongoing. I just said ongoing.
See you, Ted.
Yeah.
Well, this says it started in ninety-two.
Ninety-two?
George Proctor was mayor, and he just built our house. He said, "Here, come here."
Thanks, everybody, for coming in. Glad to see you survived COVID, all right? I'll take hell as well, all right? That's good.
Skills. Retired. I'm not retired. I work for my wife now.
You have a different boss.
Mr. Chad, what was yours anyway?
Call me.
Let me just... To the flag of the United States of America, to give our public a chance, on a nation under God, indivisible, in the Lord Jesus Christ, for all. Dear Heavenly Father, be with us as seething as we do the business for the city and the good and the welfare of the community, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I have a Steve, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion, wait, please.
I'll second. On the favor.
Aye.
You may move.
I have a Dee, citizens comments?
That would be me. Russ Wallin, with my... Goddard Race Hardware or Trump Incorporated, I own the Empire Mall, if you will, that building is located in. We've come before and before to chat and also city council about sign ordinance. We presented at the city council meeting, most recent one, and kind of the next step was as far as furthering our discussions and our understanding as to where we're going with this and our desire of where we'd like to see sign ordinance go. I know there's a lot of stuff that's in flux as far as what's been written. Some people didn't like this, or didn't like that, or like this, and there's a lot going on there. So we want you to make sure that you understood where our input was. We have a petition that's out there, we've already turned that in, given it over to... I think you have it, or Brian has come through.
I have it.
Right? So, and it's just not Russ, coming up here to chat again. We want you to realize where we're coming from. Some of the feedback we've received has been along the lines of, it's all, everyone talks about cost. I've talked about cost. It's an ardent amount of money to do what this ordinance lays out, as it's written today. Let's table that for a second. No cost involved. In a perfect world, what I'd be going after is a utopian solution that would define what is effective. What's effective on a crossroad? What's effective on Highway fifty-four? What's effective on Main Street? Do we need a fifty-foot pole sign or monument sign, or any kind of sign that's fifty-foot on Main Street? Goddard, Kansas, probably would be no. But at fifty miles an hour, sixty miles an hour, or eventually, as Highway fifty-four matures, that's going to change, or whatever that's going to be. Temporarily, we're going to potentially put in stoplights and so on as things grow. But then, over the long term, are we going to see some overpass, some flyover, if you will? Probably in the long term. When is, is that a year from now, or is it ten years now? I don't really know. It was going to happen twenty years ago, it was going to happen ten years ago, it was going to happen this year. All of those situations, those are dynamic changers that require a fundamental rethink and relook at, what is it that people look at in order to find my business? I represent in the properties that I own, four different businesses. We have one, we share one sign. We believe it's effective for what it is. What's been written into policy, if you will? It's not going to get the job done. It will effectively hurt our businesses. It may be more appropriate for that type of, of those constraints, if you will, that the way it's written today in an area where traffic is moving ten to twenty-five miles an hour, you know, something very swell, easy to find, easy to see, where people have time to study something very small. Where we're at now, it would be a fundamental game changer for us. The owners and operators that I speak to, and I speak to quite a lot of them, as I'm sure you do, that would be a severe strain on them to be able to connect with customers who are mobile and on the fly. It's hard enough to be in business today without any kind of extra challenges put in front of us, but if people can't find you, and they don't know that you're there, how long is it before you're not in business? By one means or another, and I put in an ardent amount of time, effort, and money to make sure that you can know where we're at. But at the end of the day, whether they find me online, whether that's social media, email advertisement, or what have you, this goes for all the businesses here, up and down that corridor. That still doesn't put them in your parking lot. If they can't find your parking lot easily, and it's got to be dead, dumb, simple, maybe it really does. How many people know where every QT is? Or a QuickShot? And they're easy to spot, and you can pick up on them. I pursued that same methodology with Ace, with three letters on top of that sign, because it's known and it's easy to see and easy to spot. If I put it six foot off the ground or even ten foot off the ground, I may as well not have a sign. It's a domino effect. What we're asking of you is to come up with the verbiage and language to do exactly what our mayor wants us to do and is in favor of, and that's, yes, have standards. Standards make sense to us. I don't want a ratty pole sign next to my business, or even two doors down from my business. I want something that's well maintained and functioning and looks good. We've got the former Dollar General where it's all blacked out with paint. Honestly, it looks like crap. Hopefully, they get another tenant in there and they address that very quickly, but that's not what we want. We want what's presentable and respectable. We can have some understandings of what that looks like, of how we run and maintain what a pole sign looks like. That's all fair being and very reasonable to us. We want to work with the governing bodies so that we have infrastructure in place, and some rules, if you will. I think you had pointed out, well, what if a contractor came along and was building me a brand-new business and brand-new everything, and, well, what sign could we put in? How are they going to know what it could be if we were to start changing things? Let's put some guidance in there, but also put some, what I call, common sense oversight, verbiage, so that we, which, I'll give you an example of something that's already been, that's an example of that, that'd be what, was it, was it Brahms? What they asked for in the deviation, of what a sign would look like, and what they would have for height and how it would reach. To be able to have that flexibility to work with the governing body that said, "Hey, we've got something here, and we've got a problem that we're trying to meet. We want people to be able to see us or find us. Can you construct that? Can you put that into some ordinance so that we have that flexibility to work together, to work collaboratively, versus kind of a cookie cutter? This is what signs are going to be, this high, this tall, this skinny, this fat, whatever you want to call it, and just really have it very limiting." If you could give us some feedback on that, give that consideration, that's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a Dee, approval of the minutes.
For motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes as is.
I'll second it.
Comment? This is a lot more easier to understand than this one, man.
Try to handle it that way.
On the favor? Already asked that once? Well, I just want to make sure everybody's going forward.
Catch up with all of us, the items, item F, for his own deals, there's none, old business, none, and then new business, none. We've been really busy in-house, and so it's been difficult to get things published in terms of policy changes. Most of the things that we're seeing now is permits being pulled for all the new subdivisions, so, but... One thing to note, and I'll address this to the staff before, the toll relief development. Toll relief development, I'm going to give you a quick background, wants to change some of the lot sizes, introduce twin homes into the subdivision. This requires a boundary line adjustment, and for each lot that will host a twin home will have to be split according to subdivision regulations under Article two, point one zero two. This will have to happen by the home builder after they accord the foundation, so it can be recorded accurately. Each of these lots splits will have to be approved by the planning commission. See, see, figure on the left, so it's going to include some. If it kind of light up, if that helps, or is that... Just turn it off so you can guys can see better. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay. It's also in there's in the brackets. Basically, what you have here is this is toll relief as it stands, and the developer kind of took upon himself to kind of do a design alternative, and so all the single-family housing is going to be in yellow. This is kind of lighter orange, there's going to be duplexes, and this is all private commercial. This change is this kind of dark orange right here. This is where he wanted to put his small patio homes, the twin homes. The difference between a duplex and a twin home has to do with ownership. A duplex is owned by one person and both sides are rented. A twin home is, one half is owned by one person, another half is owned by another person. That's literally kind of the definition of it. In our subdivision regulations, under Article two, each twin home has to be brought on by a lot split. That's why there's clear delineation of which lot is owned by home, who's responsible for each side, if one half of its mode, you know, versus the other half, who are we going to send a letter to, et cetera? And it also has to come with a meter for each side as well, as like normal duplexes as well. So we spoke with the developer, and he said that one of the home builders will be taking on all of these, and so we're working together to come to understanding that each of these are going to have to have a lot split according to the foundation. They can't do lot splits now because of the court of foundation. It's different than what the lot split is, they have to do lot split again, have it accurate according to what the surveyor would say. This is kind of interesting because in some of those regulations, to have a boundary line adjustment, I can approve it as a city planner, but a lot split, I can't approve. So every lot split's going to have to come before the planning commission for approval. So this has been conveyed to the developer, this is, now it's been conveyed to you, just to let you know in advance that each of these will have to be accompanied by a lot split and approved by the planning commission. So this is a kind of a pricey change, mind change, on the part of the developer, and this has all been conveyed to him, and he's willing to accept it. So that's kind of what's in the works currently. Sign ordinance draft, as you know, just from previous speaking, the sign ordinance is ongoing. There was some discussion that came up during city council and prior to city council. It's an ongoing work. It's sort of difficult to pin down exactly all the moving parts and what people want to see. So instead of presenting it as a final and having it published in a city newspaper, or like to have it terminated later, vetoed by the governing body, or maybe shot down by the planning commission, and just kind of have that reworked, we're going to have a working draft. We'll present it before the planning commission, and we'll receive feedback that'll move forward. Government body feedback, and it'll still be a draft, so it won't necessarily have to be something that has to be voted through, and we'll get the feedback of the community businesses. So now we can sort of have a roundtable about how we want the sign ordinance to move forward into the future. City attorney has weighed in, I believe you have, remember, City Pro, and Obolius Mian, she weighed in on how we can adopt a more flexible, but also streamlined sign ordinance that combines both the design elements that the planning commission would like to see, and a certain amount of rigidity that everybody summed it up on, every contractor would like to see in terms of submitting a petition or submitting a contract before a potential client, so that they know what is allowed. And of course, we want to receive the feedback of the existing businesses too, to make sure it's not too cumbersome. And so this is why we're going to kind of have it as a working draft, that way. Nothing has to be just kind of finalized immediately, and that way there'll be plenty of feedback, and everyone, hopefully, they have to have it in their day. So this is sort of my intent, and hopefully this will work. A developer map, the city intern, I believe, Mr. Justin Lloyd, who was working with me, having created a developer map, having referenced the purposes of driving development, the city governor. This came up, and I'll show you what this looks like. This came out multiple times, where developers are asking to build... A lot of developers are asking for sort of a development map, and they want ad hoc maps that are static. And so what we created was a map that was more dynamic, that's... And so what we created was a map that was more dynamic, that people could actually click on and check out different elements of it, and so this is kind of what it will look like. Load, there we go. So they'll be greeted for backsplash, welcome to Goddard, and at which point, they'll have a zoning map, parcels that are inside the city, and then parcels that immediately touch the boundary. This came up multiple times, where developers were asking about annexing. Some of the land, obviously, around the city is cheaper than the land inside the ch- city, so they're looking at where this is in relation to existing infrastructure. So we went ahead and added city water mains, city sanitary sewers, to kind of show where these are, and where there would be potential for specials versus lots that wouldn't need specials because there's already infrastructure there. We went ahead and threw in the zoning, so people could see what sort of land uses would be acceptable on those lots. And then we also had surrounding parcels as mentioned, so if you would click on one, you'd be able to see who owns it, how big it is, um, the sale year when it was last sold, total value as appraised, and how big it is in terms of acreage and square feet, as well as the parcel number here for reference in the county. So this kind of gives developers a more robust tool to use, and they, hopefully, every time they call me, I can just reference them to the map, and they would be able to review it. We also have sort of items of note, and we were hoping to add more items on there, uh, sort of points of interest, schools, Goddard, uh, city hall, grocery store, library, recreation, and zoos, and so you're able to click on each one and sort of see, um, what they are. So this is all thanks to Justin Lloyd, the intern, who will be leaving us on Wednesday. He's gonna go back to Idaho, I believe. But, um, I'm hoping this will give him a leg up on the long term for the future of future careers, so. But this development map is ultimately gonna help us save time, and hopefully grow the city, um, at a, at a, at a steady pace, so that if there's any questions, people will be able to answer for themselves. That's it for my staff before. Um, this one, the, I'm Jay, planning commission comments.
You know, when you're gonna have the draft of the sign ordinance, right?
It's drafted right now, technically. It's just determining when we wanna present it. Do we want feedback first, you know, from businesses, or do we want feedback first from planning commission? Um, Luminous Meon has been calling me pretty regularly to kind of ask for feedback on it as well, because she wants to know what she can tell her clients, and so I'm referring to her letting her know that this is gonna be a working draft. But as it stands right now, since it is a working draft, and it's not official, our current sign ordinance is still standing. So until the working draft's fully adopted and fully vetted, our current sign ordinance is what people are gonna have to buy by, you know, that. But I'm hoping to present a draft to you in July.
On that, map, the, on the website, does it, I didn't catch the detail on it, and when you like click on a lot, does it show, I'm just curious, does it show like if it's owned, or for sale, or, I mean, like, available for development, I guess, really?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, no, not really. It's just, there's been so much development happening in Goddard that even properties that are currently owned, people still wanna petition those people just to see if they'd be willing to own. So we, I was thinking about putting on a filter on there, which is a good question about, simply technically, putting a filter on there that says if there's any, any improved value, you can filter it out, and so that way, any improvement, which would be a building. If it doesn't have any improvement, if you click the filter, it would show you all the lots that don't have any, don't mind. So that was something I was thinking about putting on there. Um, and really, sky's the limit. There's so much data available, it's simply a matter of parsing the data and then manipulating it to represent things that people wanna see, so. Uh, I think that's a good point, though. But in terms of actually sales, it's really hard to get that. Most of the, most people go through realtors and that.
I think what you said is, is it developed?
Right, it's a current, yeah. That's the, that's the easiest one to manipulate, but in terms of it is for sale, most people don't have that listed readily, they're going, most realtors, site check pay, you have to pay a premium to use the site, so. Um, but yeah, there's, there's a lot that we can do with that, and it helps us at least, because, like I said, a lot of developers have been asking about what's available, you know, how, how we have a lot, you know, et cetera, so.
Question?
Nothing.
Done?
Okay.
Done.
I'm kind of gonna go back to a couple of months, I know we, we've got, um, talked over a drainage plan. I know, west or the east side here, along Cal, or on Goddard Road, it's kind of an issue. I didn't know if the city engineer, if we got anywhere as far as where everything is supposed to be going to.
Hmm, that's a good question, and it's more of an engineer-related question. He's working on a holistic drainage plan, but that takes such a long time. Um, most of the major subdivisions, for example, Rust Creek, Arbor Creek, Cloverleaf, Springdale, San Andrews, they all have their own drainage plan, but with it, um, parts of old Goddard were built in nineteen fifties and forties, and so they never really had a formal drainage plan. Even industrial leadership that should have built in nineteen seventies didn't have a formal drainage plan, so. A lot of these are gonna have to be sort of built in the ground up. There's nothing to work off of other than existing topography, which Kansas is pretty flat, so it's difficult to really make that determination. But it's a long, ongoing process, and the city engineer is, um, basically drafting to do. On top of that, there'll be all the other work that needs to do, so there is, it's a, it's an ongoing project. But I, I can't really speak to what, how it already is done on it.
No, I was just curious. I know that along Santa Fe, there are, on the west side, that's a pretty, pretty ponding area, but.
Yes.
Doesn't seem like it drains under the road.
Yeah, Santa Fe on the, uh, on Santa Fe main, on the northwest side, there's a lot of cooling that happens just off of one oh nine main, that building there, just to the south of Mrs. Cole's, Snowcome Place, and that becomes a pond. Uh, that water doesn't have a place to go. Uh, I spoke with Public Works up in Culver, and, uh, the possibility of actually digging up that, that ditch, because there shouldn't have been a ditch there to drain that water. And there is a culvert on the east and west side, but it's not draining properly, so it's a matter of kind of regrading it. And I did speak with, um, um, the property owners who own that law, I don't know, in High Cal, about bringing in more dirt work to build it up, because you notice that it kind of does the slope in the back of the property, and then it goes up, and then comes and hits the street, and so. So pools here, then pools, there's a big pool back there. Uh, ultimately, that'd be the responsibility of the property owner to bring in more dirt and regrade it. Um, but in terms of having water hit the street, that's ultimately our responsibility as a city to dig out that ditch and let it drip properly. So it's kind of two-part cover. Yeah, the, the drainage and, and everything from Santa Fe to, up to fifty-four, from Goddard Road to, oh, but everything around there has some drainage issues. So, um, we're hoping that actually Medical Lodge, if you live in with that retention pond, might as well mitigate, especially on Wall and Oak, but, uh, we're, we're not being, we want to see how that plays out, but. Ongoing.
Ongoing. Okay. I'm just curious, what the, what's it supposed to be for?
It'll be interesting to see.
On, on the drainage issue, and, just like, like Santa Fe, you're, you're addressing specifics, e- even though there's a, an overall plan being done?
Yeah, so the specifics, it depends on where it is, because with, it depends on where it is, right? For example, two-two-seven Cedar, they're gonna need culverts to get across those open ditches, and so we're gonna have to make sure those are, um, um, shot to grade, to make sure they grade correctly, and that everything is slugged correctly so the water flows. Um, Medical Lodge, since they are offsetting an acre or more, they had to put in a retention pond. All the newer subdivisions have put in a retention pond if they're offsetting an acre or more. So it's kind of site-specific. Smaller ones, if, if there's an empty lot that's like a third of an acre, there's, really, they're just gonna be built with a house. Um, there's not much left to do in terms of drainage. I mean, the city, the city's responsibility to have a curb gutter on some of those streets, and so we're working towards that. Um, but right now, we're, we're looking at regrading Second Street. That's in Public Works' popper right now to get that done, to regrade Second Street to manage some of that. Um, but yeah, it'd be site-specific. So we do address specific ones as they come along, um, but the holistic plan is supposed to take into account where all the water's flowing in the city, and where is it supposed to drink to, is it not drinking correctly? And we have a lot of open ditches, and those open ditches settle over time, and then they can be regraded, and take that into account as well, so.
I guess I'm looking for my motion. I'd like to work on what we got.
I'll second.
On the favor.
Aye.